finishing up my assignment right now putting the final touches on what I hope is gonna pass so what I'm doing right now is I'm putting, plugging in my Excel documents into this Word file it's a bit strange to to view what's going on here so I'm just trying to put it out in a way that it's easier to read I think what I'm gonna do is go back, clean this up a little bit and clean the rest of this up a little bit and then see how it works out I'm still, okay, cool yeah, so lurks, thanks for sticking it out with me from the beginning to start, I'm just gonna close up my door hey guys, I'm back again so, you know what, let's start from the beginning there so what was happening was on the timeline of my report, so this is what's going on right now to show my work, I have to consolidate it into one file typically when we're trying to consolidate a big plan like this I would have it in multiple different files but, oop, sorry multiple different files but on a plan like this, the best thing that may the best thing that may that you can do with a plan like this is try and convert it to a JPG so that the try and convert it to a JPG so that these tables fit in so what I have here is the yearly plan, I'm just fixing that up there I'm going back to the year mezzo cycle I think maybe the best idea for this right now is go all the way over here, click that and then just reduce the sizing of the fonts slightly uh, maybe, maybe not I think maybe what might be a better idea is so I have weak competition phases in testing I think maybe it might be the best idea to split this up by three month increments or four month increments and then do three at a time depending on the split that I have here hmm, I think it may be best I split it maybe half of the year so I'm thinking, I'm not sure if that looks any better, maybe I should take this month and then put it on the bottom there and then that way the formatting might fit a little bit better so these are just the final touches that I'm putting on my high performance plan it may be a little bit strange when programming a plan like this, to fit this in to the high performance plan because it's an Excel table, so if you're looking at, say, I'm gonna take this put that copy and paste that there it still looks a little bit strange, however a great way to fit this into fit this into the program is converting it to a JPG so if you're noticing the music in the background check out my page, I'm on SoundCloud this is my Spacey album in the background, so it's pretty cool wait, what was I doing again? oh, yeah, so I'm converting this to a JPG or a PNG, but you know what, JPG should do it and I think I kind of converted that a little bit early, I was gonna split this in half and then so I gotta unmerge whoa oh, okay, I was just like, oh, nah, not again so yeah, that's a convergence center, maybe I have too many things open? I'm not sure come on now alright, we got this okay, maybe that wasn't meant to happen just yet okay, I have a better idea so, well, not a better idea, but another idea so downloads, here's my yearly macro cycle, part A which hasn't popped up yet, and this is part B having some serious technical difficulties right now but here's part B, so what I'll do is edit edit crop and rotate pull that in oh, and my posture is a little bit off again so this is probably the best part about an assignment just getting just getting to just getting to put on those final touches, just remember that when you're putting together an assignment like this, it could be quite difficult to get the sorry it could be quite difficult to fit in the charts into the assignment so it just takes a little bit of time and once you can the overall assignment will look much better just remember, don't give up on it so, one of the problems that I was experiencing previously when doing an assignment like this so a problem that I was experiencing when doing an assignment like this was when I put in the Excel files into a normal Word document, it slows down the document and then I'm unable to do any further editing afterwards by turning it into a JPG, I'm actually reducing the system load or the RAM usage that it takes to system memory I know, it's a really strange term but yeah, it's pretty nice, like getting to put the final touches on this and making it extra fancy merge so what I'm thinking about doing here just to fill in these blanks so that it's easier to read once it's in JPG format maybe add a bit of contrast so here fill it in black that way you don't even see the lines merge center, fill that in fill that in and then the best part about an assignment like this is you get these small areas where you can just make it look cool, right? And then, so now it seems a little bit off I'm doing the full Bob Ross here and I'm going to just paint this with thick outside borders so, maybe that might not fit there, that looks a little bit out of place let's unmerge that merge these two and maybe fill that in like so fill that in like so so I was a little bit stressed out today because I was like, oh man, how am I gonna fit this into my program? or how am I gonna fit this into my assignment? and then I started doing it, and I'm like, you know what? it's time to beautify the space of this homework if anybody's checking in now, there's always like little areas that you can you know, put a little bit of creativity and a ton of work does not seem like much, or a bunch of work does not seem like much after you know what, I'm gonna put this as white there, you know what's funny, I actually ended up completely I ended up completely just changing it back, which is strange but I think it just needed that separator over there alright, and then you know what, let me unmerge that put that in over here and then merge, ah! merge there we go bit of black no, black there and then a bit of that merge merge, and good to go let me separate this a little bit so that there's a clear defined border over here I'm gonna add in just so I can, there you go and that looks good so I hear, oh wait, I don't even have to do that but just for reference, here's what'll happen if I were to copy and paste it into here or just even dragging and dropping it sorry you can start here, hit Shift click, copy boom, paste but then looking at that and the formatting of it, it just like, it does not fit in for some reason so this is why I this is why I'm suggesting this type of method to do this or why was it really useful method for me, or it is a useful method for me at the moment yearly macro cycle, so I'm throwing that in there, it's gonna PDF, I don't want PDF I wanna turn it into a JPG so convert more files add files, yearly macro cycle convert to JPG and convert now thanks, thanks guys so to JPG so yeah, if you guys like any of this music it can be found on my page there's like, pretty, like, tons of everything there okay, I'm gonna have to find another converter or just try and use all the converters anyway, sorry, I just get a little bit distracted every once in a while and I find that getting into, like, playing music it really does help you like maintain that concentration because every once in a while you just wanna be like, hey, I wanna just play or something, I'd rather just but right now let's crop this and you know what, it doesn't even look that good like that, I don't like how it looks so I'm gonna go back here what do you guys think? nah you know what, I'm just gonna stick it out with that format convert XLS to JPG browse put up a bit of the volume there so a little background, a couple years ago I got really into jazz and something about jazz just really interested me at the time and it was really relaxing to listen to especially when you listen to this kind of music I enjoy other forms of jazz, tons of old school stuff that looks like a much better format, so I'm just gonna go save that, put that in my thesis folder yearly schedule save image as competition schedule and then take a peek at this, this is gonna be, this is gonna be awesome so, we're back to this competition schedule and then in the comparison between a normal table, I'm sorry that took so long but here's our competition schedule we're gonna go over here and then just paste that in way nicer format minimize it just slightly and crop it within the Word document I would drag it like that, but coming from Photoshop, I am not going to do that why? Because it stretches the image in really weird areas I honestly don't like doing it, but sometimes you don't have the choice so it's like so I'm just gonna try and center it, I kind of miss the you know, the centering type tools so we're gonna go over here, the yearly schedule and for anybody that's doing a massive high perform, or a massive plan that you have to copy and paste into these in these documents, it kind of goes underlook the usefulness of a JPG but here I am, this is the example of where you have to do it right? And it just looks like oh buddy, so the best, the best thing I can do for this is literally just leave it like that unless I were to, I'm gonna try there's a certain there's a certain formatting on the side here, so I can't really go over that, I'm just gonna try and crop it, move it over to the side if anybody's watching this video and has to do this in the future, I hope this video actually, like, I really hope this video helps convert it to a JPG and then this is what you're able to do with it hopefully this, hopefully this I don't know if many people have used Photoshop, but sometimes you'll like change a picture and the the resolution will look really long until you press Enter so I guess we'll have to zoom in over there and that, that's, like, that's literally as good as I can I mean, I could let's move on, for hypertrophy phase, I wanna put the like, it pains me to like to see this right now it pains me so much so, sorry about that, actually, that's a voice sample that I put in a little while ago something that I just practiced on my own, it may not fit exactly to most people's taste, so we're just moving on to my classic I have a couple albums sitting around here, so I have a classical album, a lo-fi album that I did with Italian Music, thank you for that Spacey album, and my early days so I'm gonna go to my early days, we'll get into that maybe later and then sorry about that, small distraction so hypertrophy phase, I'm gonna get into that and then, close that, close that go back here well, I already have the page open now browse mezzo, micro, sorry, this is our mezzo cycle, so I'm gonna go in hypertrophy phase open that up, convert now sorry, I've been I've been talking quite a bit today we're just gonna open up a couple of these files so this is my conversion from last time I'm not sure exactly how I'm gonna fit this in but I think maybe it's worth, I'm not sure what to call it because this would be an example of the program so it's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit interesting to have to fit this into have to fit this in here, but going back to the thesis hypertrophy phase, example I just put hypertrophy phase I'm gonna go from here, and you know what, probably the easiest thing to do, maybe yeah, I could just drag it and then just boom, okay, well, that doesn't work I will have to go here and grab that hypertrophy phase and boop there we go clean, crop top corner then so I'm thinking maybe this might be the maybe the cleanest way that I can actually paste it into the assignment all the information is there if you zoom in so I'm thinking it's okay, considering, you know, it fits the form factor of the assignment however, if anybody I mean, that's kind of so this, I'm gonna have to redo, this isn't too bad because at least it retained most of the original information and formatting for future reference this is a really, like, convenient method that I had just found to put these type of files into that file I'm not sure exactly what I'm gonna call this, but I'm just gonna say, maybe data entry page? or athlete log? or athlete legend? athlete log? yeah, so athlete log and then put that in go back to this yearly competition schedule sorry about that resources, I think this would fit under resources, would it not? and then I forgot change the colors yeah, you know what, this is part of the program athlete log Athlete log. So, I'm just gonna put... That actually doesn't fit there. So I'm just gonna go quiet for a little bit, um, finish this up. And we'll, we'll, we'll get into maybe some more useful advice that I may come across while finishing up this assignment. So, um, when I clicked each of these things, uh, and created the title, I went to the top here and then I created heading one, heading two, heading three, and heading four. Uh, the reason I did that was going way back to the top and just trying to fill in some blanks here. Uh, this table of contents, all I had to do was insert it. Where did I find it? Just a sec there guys, um, layout, insert. Yeah, insert table of contents, uh, automatic table. So if you put the formatting, so this is a, this is a, um, heading number one. Uh, sorry, I clicked the wrong button there. Uh, so that's heading one, this is heading one. Ah, no, what happened? Yeah, so, um, this is heading one, heading one. Um, going back up here to my second part. Uh, that would be heading one, this would be heading two, and then this would be heading three. So then all you would have to do anytime you wanna update something and then put, um, no, sorry, I'm gonna use my mouse, and then make sure that it stays in order like that, and make sure that it has a hierarchy of order. Um, heading one, heading two, heading three, heading four, and then the ha, the Word document will automatically recognize it, so boom, and then there you go. But I'm not sure why the picture's in there, I'm gonna... What? Why, like, why? Why? Uh, yeah, so, uh, delete that. Yeah, there you go. So, um, back down here. Oh, update entire table, but I don't know why I put the picture in. Um, so down here, schedule, etc., I'm gonna clean that up after. Uh, competition schedule yearly, schedule. Yearly competition schedule, uh, that should be athlete log. Back down here, control, save. Good stuff. So, uh, close that back up. Close I on the hypertrophy phase. Yearly schedule hypertrophy phase, we're gonna take that, put that back in here. So, uh, we're almost here, strength phase, power phase, and then there we go, we're almost done. Uh, go there, click it back. This. Um, power phase, we'll start off with the strength phase. Convert now. It's a bit hot in here, but it's not too bad. I made a massive mistake here. So I have a strength phase, week one hypertrophy phase. So, uh, we'll get on some of that lofi. Oh yeah. And now I'm just, uh, going through the hoops, but, um, I mean, going through the hoops like I'm good. Ah, yeah. So I just take some time here. Uh, made a massive mistake there, back to the JPGs. Right-click, save. Boom. I could do like a week two or something, but, uh, it's alright. Hey, by the way, if there's anybody out there that may need a, um, template for some Excel work done for, um, strength and conditioning programming, give me a shout, cuz I totally don't mind making this stuff. Um... Actually, like, this is probably some of my favorite stuff to do, is like, sit around and, um, just like, actually do some reading. However, having to do the formatting part is never fun, but you just gotta do it sometimes. Take that, and then just drop that in there. Zoom back in. Clean that up. So we're off to a little bit of a shaky start. And then... Now things are going swimmingly. Control, save. Why is control save reducing the the quality of my pictures? So I must be saving in a very small, uh, format, but you know what? Let's just keep it going here. Uh, maybe it's JPG, or actually, I think I might have another idea what that is, and seeing as that is... I really hope this does not say hypertrophy phase on this. Okay, it does, it, it's fine. Um, there we go. Maybe I should go here, save as. Is there saving options for this? Maybe if I saved it as a, um, as a PDF, that might work. Optimize for image quality. BMP text. Options. Save. Go back up here. Strength phase. Boom, right-click, save as. Or sorry, power phase. Oh, can you react to a GoodHelp video? Um, yes, hamburger. What's up? Um, okay, what was I doing again? Okay, yearly schedule. Put that in there. Put that down. Pull that to the corner. Uh, athlete log. So this is an amazing song that, uh, Italia Music, uh, worked, uh, worked on here. Um, quite a bit of this was his own inspiration as well as mine. What? Okay, it looks readable now, okay, cool. Um, that was funny, cuz like, I just got like, I just got like, whoa, um, I thought it wasn't gonna work again, but it's good. Um, schedule yearly, competition schedule, hypertrophy phase. Boom, hypertrophy over here. Yeah, so, um, if this is the song that I'm thinking of right now, this is a very nice mixture between our, both of our styles, uh, Italian music and mine. So, uh, definitely check them out. And I think that's it. So zoom in back out. Surprisingly, these outfits really well there. Okay, I think that's it. Ah, I pressed save, didn't I? Okay, you know what, I think I messed up here. Made a bit, another, another big mistake. So we're gonna go here, open up all these, just do it all at once. Open, and then I'm going to convert it to SVG. Does that work? Let me see. I mean, it is a, it is a vector file, but I always thought vector file... Ah, no, 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 let's just see what happens. Cuz that would be real scalable. I mean, it would retain the sizing, right? Good. Okay, maybe not a vector file. Uh, how about I try again? Uh, choose files. I think I'm gonna have to put like an in conclusion section for this. Uh, okay guys, this may be the best format. Um, hopefully this saves some people some, um, some trouble when they have to go through this, so I'm, I'm just gonna try out PNG, PNG is usually a good format. Maybe I should have put JPG because, ugh. Okay, PNG might work. What happened to that last website? Oh, I think it was this. This is, um, much better. Oh, so... I think these PNGs might work. Ah, what did I do here? Is that it? Oh, no, I put in the JPG again. Um... Okay, I'm being unproductive right now. So sometimes, um, sometimes when you look at these files and stuff... And it like, it just really gets to you, it's like... You end up just holding yourself back. So it's nice to just sit up straight, don't sink into it after a while and just... Come on, you know, like... Almost there, all I gotta do, add in a couple, um... Quick things, and you know what? That probably wouldn't have happened in the first place... If I had just saved it as a PDF and just called it a day. So you know what? Let's get this done and... Let's, let's get to it. Yearly schedule, okay. Dude, done. Um... Asset log. Where's it at? Done. Hypertrophy phase. I'll put it in PNG this time. Just for some kicks. Um, hypertrophy phase. Asset log. hypertrophy phase. Delete that. Open this back up. Stop looking at your anti-Catholic archive stuff on your PC. Oh, no! Um... So going back to this. Strength Phase. Throw that in, Power Phase. Okay, so this formatting really bothers me. Pull that across. Open that up a little bit. Leave that there. Back to my Spacey album yet again. Open that up. Alright, guys. We can do this, we can do this. So at any time, guys, like, you know, you may have a task that's like... To me, it was easier to write this assignment. Um, so I'm gonna turn off the music for a little bit. Uh, because I'm, I'm talking really, really loud. But, um... To me, it was actually easier to write this assignment than it was to try and fit these... Excel tables into this format. However... Um... It is my own fault. Why is it my own fault? Because I could have just made the table like that, and then it would have just... Been totally fine. Uh, also, I didn't really... I didn't really make it in with, with, um, thought put to, um... So for now... And you know what? I think I might be able to... Let me, let me, let me make, let me try and get this out of the way. And then let's try and get like a little bit crafty with it. And it, it may work just like HTML. Um, if it does, it... That'd be pretty sweet. I mean, it is 2020. And, uh, like, I barely get to use, uh, I haven't... I, I've been using Office 2016 for the last couple of years. So, um... Yeah, so we'll see. Um, it might actually, it might actually turn into something really cool here. So anyway, I got that saved up, save as... This PC, um, da-da-da, PDF. So the PDF might work the best. Save. Yes. And go. Come on. Maintain the, maintain the, um... Please. Why? Okay, maybe I messed up again. Go back here, save as. More opti... Oops, sorry. Um, go back to the PDF. Maybe standard options. Optimize for image quality, so it should work on that. Okay, you know what? I might be able to... That looks okay. This, um, messes up quite a bit. This may actually look better as a... I'm gonna try one more time, so I'm gonna do save as. Uh, High Performance Weightlifting Plan. Version two. Um... Just be, uh... Just before I get, try to get crafty here. I think I saw something up there, uh, table. Excel spreadsheet. Yeah, that might work, actually. Um, so this would, this would definitely be similar to embedding a, um... That would actually be perfect. So, um, Control, Excel spreadsheet, schedule yearly. Um, I'm gonna leave this as a JPG just to be safe. Go back here. Open all that up. And I think this might be the best way, so hopefully everybody has the right formatting, um... Copy, paste. Go back to my yearly schedule. And then zoom out possibly. So there might be a way to lock this. And wow, this is actually an amazing improvement. Um, so... Unfortunately, I don't know how to use it, um, just yet. Uh, maybe all I have to do... Uh, and then minimize that. Minimize that. Maybe like, uh, size 11 or size 9 should work. Get that a bit there. There, that's it. Uh, so whoa, that worked really well, actually. That is a welcome, welcome, welcome change to, um... To the formatting. Uh... So I wonder if I could just lock it in place? Link to... Yeah, so I, I wouldn't be able to do that with this document. I'm just gonna Control click. And then... That seems to be the best, most descriptive way to include this information into my document. Except, I'm not sure, maybe I'll leave a note on the side. Yeah, that seems to be it. So that is all the information there, uh... Fits within... Not yet entirely. But bring it just to there. That should do it. Fits right in, and then I will just put a note. Here. Double click. Table. For... Maybe where should I... Where, where would I put a note like that? Okay, I'm not sure just yet, but for now, let me make sure that I get everything out of the way. Uh, I'm gonna go back here, get the section in. Pull that up. Um, right click. Down, go to eight. Open that up just slightly. And there we go. Drag that out a bit. I wonder if I can zoom out? If I can zoom out in this, this would like look, oh man. Um, let's go to Google. So maybe this might work, right click. Picture. Format object. Color, brightness, da-da-da, size. Absolute, absolute, height, width. Um, you know what? Let's put it at 5.5. See how that looks? Does it fit within the formatting? No. Nope, sorry. So yeah, it's under picture now. Size... 5.3. We'll do 5.3 by 15. Should work. Uh... Okay, that may not work. But I wonder if that works on something else? But for now, the important part is that I actually got most of the information off of that file into there, so that's pretty cool. Um, we wanna have the borders set? Hmm. Yeah, that works. Hypertrophy phase. Insert Excel spreadsheet. Hey, I know you're studying, but can you re- react to this? Okay, dude. Thanks for popping in, Cavi. I'm riding solo. Huh, hold on. Um, you still in the room there? Ah, you know what? What a guy, oh, Jason Derulo. How did I get on YouTube? I'm not sure. Uh, not cool, hey Ricardo Milo. You're not even a real Ricardo Milo, come on. Uh, so yeah. I'm gonna have to just keep going on here, hypertrophy phase. Copy. Paste. Right click. Eight. Heh, heh, eh. Okay, so hypertrophy phase N. Let me make sure that that's... Appropriately placed. Asset log. Um, strength phase. Insert. Oh, no, not that. Excel spreadsheet. Bam. Excel spreadsheet. Strength phase. So um, oh. FYI, uh, I had a guy in the other day, um, a couple days ago and he asked me to draw a Squidward and he still has not come to claim his Squidward, so... If you're ever, if you ever come back dude, um, Squidward is here waiting for you. Not, not this Squidward, but that Squidward. I don't know, that was a bit weird. Um, so anyway, back to, back to this. Uh, strength phase. Do, de-dee-dee. Um... Go there, hit that as eight. And then now I have... That. Yo, I did so much work that my mouse went backwards. Hmm... Hmm... Hmm. Sorry there guys. Must be running up my processes. Close that up. Hmm. So it seems I'm having a bit of technical difficulties here. Very strange stuff. So in situations like these, it's good to remember to save all the time. Um, close that up. Close that up. Go back, and I have Google Drive prepared. I'd rather not go into that on camera. But, let's see if I can try this a little more time. And let's uh, go back on that uh, task manager. See what's going on over here. That's holding my computer back. It seems I have two Microsoft Excel open at the same time. Anti-malware. Hmm. Why is Windows Defender on? Hmm. So much work. Ah, forget it. So sometimes Windows Defender goes on randomly and really slows down my processes, so... What's causing this to happen? Service host UTC. Hmm. That's okay. So the way that I've uh, structured my computer, sometimes uh, certain things may start going a little bit nuts. Probably my fault again. Hmm, but I'm pretty close to this right now, so let's see what happens. Uh, there's always a way around it, so it's not a big deal. I'm just gonna turn off my cam real quick.